All right, seeing it's 6:30, we'll call the Regional School Committee to order. Do we have the roll?
Sure. Steve Owen.
Here.
Gene Fox.
Here.
Sherri Baron.
Here.
Robert Clark.
Here.
Derek Gracia.
Here.
Will Sankowicz.
Here.
And Laura is not, and Mr. Sylvia will be.
I will say Laura is out this evening for a good cause. Her son has achieved a rank of Eagle Scout, so tonight is the court of honor. So, all apologetic, she wasn't going to be here. Anybody recording the meeting? Thank you. Please join me in the Pledge Allegions.
I. Pledge allegiance to civil rights in the United States of America. A true republic, which stands one nation under God, indivisible, infinite, and just as
Next on the agenda is the acceptance of minutes from December 12th.
Motion to approve.
I have a motion. I have a second. Any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Any objections? Motion passes. Presenting to the School Committee, Mr. Pacico, Mr. Wilson.
Yeah, so the main office gives a big thank you to student council for their generous donation of a money counting machine. It will be the benefit for all clubs and activities, as well as the main office staff. The NEAF Self-Study Committee, which is assisting the school council, is also pleased to report that the Standard One is complete and approved by the staff. Standard Four is currently under review by the staff, and Standard Two will be reviewed at next week's school council meeting. You can visit the Upon Aquit website, as well as the South Coast website, for sports standings, as well as game information. We are pleased to announce that the business, marketing, and engineering students will have an advantage to tour the Amazon facility in Fall River during semester two. We are looking forward to a foregoing partnership with this facility. Class of 2019 students, parents, and guardians are invited to attend a scholarship information night. This event is Thursday, January 31st, 2019, from 6:00 to 7:00 in the ARHS Lecture Hall. RSVPs to Ms. Nicole Graff at (508) 947-2660, extension 1153, or her email, ngraff@freelake.org, are encouraged but not necessary. The snow cancellation date for this event is February 5th, 2019. Attention, Grade Eight parents and guardians, please join Mrs. Paula Money on Thursday, January 24th, 2019, at 6:30 in the ARHS Lecture Hall for a high school planning for college and career success. This is a valuable presentation for parents and guardians of Grade Eight students who may have a child entering ARHS for the first time, or for parents and guardians who would like updated information on course selections, pre-college and post-secondary planning. Students who will have the opportunity to learn more about ARHS and the course selection process during our small group sessions in March are welcome to attend. However, the night will be geared toward parents and guardians. Any questions, please contact mrsmoney@pmoney@freelake.org. And as usual, there are free math and ELA-MCAS tutoring options available for Grade Nine and Ten students. If you have any questions, please contact your child's guidance counselor at (508) 947-2660.
Student Council, thanks everyone who donated to their holiday clothing drive. All donations will be given to the American Red Cross. A Holiday Hat Day was sponsored by the ARHS Administration. Each hat worn by a student or a staff member resulted in a donation to Hasbro Children's Hospital. On Thursday, December 20th, the ARHS Choir presented their annual choir tour, performing at the other four schools in the district. The ARHS Music Department, under the direction of Mr. Ledwith, presented their winter concert on Tuesday, December 18th. Performing groups included the Jazz Ensemble, Select Choir, Choir and Band. The concert was excellent. Karina Jacobson, Grade Nine, performed as a piano accompanist for Aswamsen School's Winter Concert on December 12th. Karina is a member of the Upon Aquit Band, Choir, Select Choir, and Jazz Ensemble. And Eric Edelman, Class of '09, did a Google Hangout with Mr. Rose's Entrepreneurship class. Edelman spoke of his time at ARHS and how he learned to put in the extra effort to succeed. He also spoke of his college education, Boudoirine and Harvard, and his career journey. Edelman is currently working at a co-living startup in New York City as a product manager. And congratulations to Hannah Levin. Hannah currently ranked number one in the class of 2019, was awarded the Francis W. Gallisham Memorial Scholarship. This scholarship presented in conjunction with the South Coast Educational Collaborative and Massachusetts Association of School Superintendents. It was presented to her on December 13th. In addition to $1,000, Hannah received her certificate, a speech in her honor, and a luncheon at Stone Hill.
Thank you. Any questions for, as usual, thanks for your time?
Thank you.
I'm sure you're welcome to stay for the rest of the session if you want to. The 5B HRHS 2019-2020 Program of Studies. Dr. Starkey.
Hi, how are you?
Good, how are you?
Good, thank you for having me.
Before you begin, just for the committee, did you have the summary in front of you in your packet, both sent electronically?
Yep.
They were only a handful of the full program of studies that were printed out, but they are spread out on here, but everyone should have it electronically. Thank you, sorry.
All right, no worries. Before I begin, I'd like to thank Dr. Korea, who isn't here with us tonight, but she's always instrumental in our review and revision to the program of studies. I'd also like to thank the ARHS curriculum leaders and Paula Money for their contributions to the document that you're reviewing this evening. And as always, thank you to Mr. Majeres for his support and your support of our academic programming at ARHS. So you did receive a list of proposed changes to the program of studies. You can see it's very brief. For those of you who've been on the committee for some time, you've seen this go from a two-page document to the brief summary before you today. So we've done an awful lot of work on our program of studies over the past six years. So in addition to just minor changes in grammar, the things I'd like to call your attention to are the new vision of a graduate, which is listed for you on page two. That's in order to be in compliance with NEAS and C regulations. We have a set of core values and beliefs here at the school and academic expectations as well, but NEAS and C has required us to put our heads together and determine what a vision of our graduate is based on the core values and beliefs and academic expectations. So that's available for you there on page two. Our students, in particular Robert Pacico, who was here earlier, was instrumental in the conversation to develop that. You'll also notice on page nine, we have the class of 2023, our incoming freshmen, the graduation requirements for them. There's no change in the requirements from the class of 2022, it's just an update, so that it's specific to that class. There's a change on page 1112. This comes directly from the College Board. The College Board is implementing a mandatory fee for any student who drops an AP course after October 25th. It's a fee of $40. In the past five years, we've only had two students drop a course after October 25th. In both cases, it was a medical issue, and I would assume if we have a medical issue that would necessitate student dropping a course, I would present that that would be something we, as a district, would assist a student with, rather than assessing a family who's likely going through a difficult situation. So although we're presenting the information related to this new fee to you and to the students, it's not likely something we'll be imposing, that we'll have to impose. And then also on page 14, we have realigned our internal promotion requirements to match the graduation requirements for the class that's coming in. So some of you may remember, we've increased our graduation requirements of high school. We started with only 100 credits back in 2013 to the necessary 120 to meet minimum state expectations, and each year we have realigned our internal promotion requirements to align with that. So you'll see that on page 14 of the document. In terms of courses, we are adding three courses to the program of studies. Two are not necessarily courses, they're opportunities for students to engage in independent studies, one in marketing and one in mixed media. They are both courses that we currently run at the high school. However, on occasion, you get a student who can't fit it into a schedule, and in both cases, we have teachers who are willing to allow students to independently pursue this curriculum, either on their own or while another course is running. So it just puts it in the program of studies, so the students can get credit for pursuing those opportunities. It's a nice way to offer enrichment opportunities to kids who have a full schedule. And then the Social Studies Department is meeting state mandates for changing the social studies, execution of social studies curriculum, middle school through high school. So as many of you have probably heard, eighth grade students will now have a civics course, which necessitated a change at the high school because they wouldn't be having World History One in eighth grade. So we're now introducing World History One and Two as one course for ninth-grade students. Following that is U.S. History One, U.S. History Two, and then most of our students take multiple history and social studies electives in their fourth year as an option. So that's an alignment change. And then course deletions, again, in order to add the new World History course that covers One and Two, we have to remove from the program of studies World History Two, because we're collapsing that one specific course. And then we have an under-enrolled elective that's called U.S. History Cold War to the Present. We haven't run the course for the past couple of years, so we're looking to remove it from the program of studies, and the Social Studies Department is surveying students to see what they'd be interested in to replace that a year out from now. In math, we also have a course called Math with College Fundamentals. It's, again, a course that we haven't run for the past two years. It's been under-enrolled, so we're looking to clean the program of studies and remove the course. And then I can tell you the same thing about science, fundamentals of chemistry and research methods. We offer chemistry at the college preparatory level, at the honors level, and at the AP level, so we're removing what would have been the lower rung of chemistry. We don't have students taking that course anymore. And then research methods was largely an independent course that students would take, and again, we haven't had kids enrolled in it in some time, likely because they're doing research in all the other science classes they're taking, and also likely because our students go well beyond the three-year requirement of science. So we're looking to remove those from the program of studies. Questions?
Thank you. Any questions for Dr. Starkey?
There's no additional staff requirements in any of these moves of the curriculum?
No. No, the two independent courses are taught by teachers who are currently in the building who already teach the course, but are willing to take on independent students.
Any other questions? require a vote, or no?
We typically have taken.
Yeah, we vote this.
I'll entertain a motion to accept the 2019-2020 Program of Studies as presented.
So.
I have a motion and accept. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any objection? Any abstention? Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
5C Athletic Program Update, Mr. Cabuccio.
Well, thank you for having me here tonight. At the request of the committee, last year, we'll be presenting all of last year, fall, winter, and spring. And that's what the packet was that I think you've each received. It's a lengthy packet, I'm not going to go through each and every one of them, but I wanted to recognize all those different student athletes that contributed to our athletic community and school committee all throughout the year. And I do want to highlight a few of them. We will look at, we really had a great year. We had a fantastic year, because when you look at the accolades they received on that paper, and I'm going to rehash some of them right now, we basically had 54% of our total enrollment participating in at least one sport. So 4 in 14 out of the 775, 54%. Now, as comparison for this past fall and past, this winter we're going in now, we're about seven down from last year in the fall. We're 21 down in the winter. We're about 45 less people in the building. So at 54%, we think that's a normal progression of where we're going with it. It's not a significant drop, both with seven less student athletes in the fall and 21 less in the spring, 45 less students in the building, we dropped down to 730. So we haven't done the spring, but as for comparison, two years ago in the spring, we had 206 athletes. Last year, we had 248. So we really do not know the spring numbers until they actually sign up, enter the sport, spend a couple of weeks there and stay in there. So it's hard to tell the overall numbers at this point for the year, but it seems like it's staying fairly balanced, even with the increase in the use of fee. I see no difference in participation, because we'll spike up and down with different sports, the different track programs, that will certainly raise your percentage up and down, because those are open-ended programs. Most of the other teams have designated rosters and numbers, but it's the track programs that you go from, whether it's the cross-countries in the fall, the winter track, and the spring track. Those are the ones that take your numbers up between that 48 and 54%. So I consider that a slight drop in both the fall and winter at the present, so I don't see that the use of fee increase had any impact on participation at this point. All the waivers go through Dr. Starkey. I don't think those are any different than they've been in past years. So just to throw that out right at the beginning here, because we did have a controversial increase last year, it doesn't seem to be impacting participation at this time. So if there's any questions on, before I start going into some of the recognitions of a student athlete, is there any questions on the use of fees that you might want to throw out there now? No? We're good? Okay. All right. 21 of our 24 varsity sports all participated in postseason play. The Laker teams, we enjoyed three conference championships. Girls Indoor Track for the first time in 18 years, Boys Basketball for the second consecutive year, and Baseball for the second time in 38 years. We were recognized by five South Coast Conference MVPs. What that means is, our 10-team conference, five different individuals were voted as the most valuable player in that particular sport out of all 10 teams. So we're pretty proud of that fact right there. We had Sophia Gosher with Girls Basketball, Kaitlin Sardellis, both indoor and outdoor track, Colin Fahey with Baseball, and Leanne Kendall with Girls Tennis. We also enjoyed five New Bedford Standard Times Player of the Year recognitions. That's very important, too, because now that expands it out of our conference, that expands it to the readership within the Standard Times, which is about, they considered about 20 different towns. And we had five that were Player of the Year. Sophia Gosher, Basketball, Adam Seabloom, Boys Basketball, Leanne Kendall, Girls Tennis, and Leanne, it was the first for us, also won the Showcase Award, which was for all sports for the Standard Times. So we were pretty impressed with that, that Leanne did a fantastic job over four years, and we had a showcase Player of the Year. We also had Kaitlin Sardellis for Girls Outdoor Track, and Colin Fahey for Baseball. So that was pretty impressive, having five. Andrew Johnson from Boys Basketball, he won the prestigious Dave Cowan's Achievement Award, only the third boy in our school history to do it, so we were very proud of that. We also had two state champions, and one of them is, I know it's the first for the Lakers, because it was a wrestler. We had Jaden Estrada, who won 113-pound state championship wrestling for the Middleborough Ponacor Cooperative Team. And that's just a fantastic opportunity for a student, we have two students wrestling with them. Others can wrestle, but we only had two there this year, and they assume the use of fee that Middleborough imposes. They're responsible for the transportation to Middleborough, and Middleborough's very happy to have some Lakers over there helping them supplement their program. And the fact that the first year, one of our student athletes became a state champion is quite impressive, so we're very pleased with that. We had a second state champion in Kaitlin Sardellis. She won the Division Four Pentathlon, which is also an unusual event for us here at Upon Aquit, so we had those two state champions. We also had two Globe All Scholastics, Andrew Johnson for Boys Basketball and Leanne Kendall for Girls Tennis. That's important, because they consider that an all-state team. So we had two student athletes that were members of the all-state teams for the state of Massachusetts, and we're very pleased with that. The entire Upon Aquit Athletic Department, we were recognized for the first time that I can recall. We came in second, but it's a pretty prestigious, it's the Dalton Award that the Boston Globe hands out, and it goes by winning percentage of all your teams. And what's impressive about it is, we only had three conference champions. So this means all 24 varsity programs were very highly competitive, and we won at a 65% rate. And unfortunately, old Rochester, they won it out for the entire state, but we were right behind at 65%. And I just don't recall us being recognized that high before, so it was a very good year for the Lakers last year. We also, probably, an item that I'm more proud of, for the fourth consecutive year, the MIAA recognized Upon Aquit as an outstanding sportsmanship program, recognizing all 25 teams for what outstanding sportsmanship they displayed throughout the year. We have that banner in the gym, and that's for the fourth consecutive year, so we actually take more pride in that particular award right there, because what was happening is, our teams are winning, they're winning right, and they're being recognized for doing it right. So we're very proud of that. And like I said, your packets, you take a moment to look at them, when you have time, it'll take you a while. I just felt it was necessary for each program to outline the very, those aren't the individual team awards, those are the ones that are recognized by bigger organizations, like the Standard Times, the conference, or different newspapers. All the individual ones, we don't really list those, but that's something that's mentioned at their sports banquets that they're recognized for. Now, is there any questions on any of the awards or students we just spoke about? If not, I'll move on to a couple other topics.
I will just say, I'm happy that we have a full year. Typically, we just get a quick season, but I think this is absolutely impressive.
Actually, I'm glad you suggested it, Steve, because, you know, I've always done, I've always had the data and done it season by season, and you've always asked in the fall, and then, once I put it on paper, and I printed it out, and it came out to 10, 11 pages, it's quite impressive. So it did me a great service, too, because you get caught in the trenches that you're doing it, getting it done for the season, and moving on, and then when you look at the whole body of work at the end of the year, I mean, we had a fantastic year, and I want to tell more people about it.
Yeah, no, this is incredible. It's not just the win-loss, but the sportsmanship aspects of it, it's a.
And you'll see that banner in our gymnasium, and it's not there every year, and what happens is, you have no coaches disqualified, you have no players disqualified from games, they're behaving well, and, you know, that's the fourth consecutive year, and, you know, we're just proud of it.
Any other comments, questions at this point?
Okay. One of the hot topics we've had is concussion baseline testing. We continue, we're leading a lot of our local schools in that, in that we have implemented it with the middle school and the high school wellness programs. Now, with the middle school doing tri-se semesters, they've assured me that they'll have it all done by February 24th, 25th. They go now, they hit wellness in that middle piece, so they do the entire eighth grade. And that's important, because we can't have gaps in that, because right now, we're relying on them to do it in the eighth grade, because we won't be doing a baseline test their freshman year, we do it their sophomore year. That gets them through the remaining two years. This is not a state mandate, so we're doing something, we're providing a tremendous service for our entire student body. It's more of a tool for the doctor's office or parents, and it's not mandated, and it's just a fantastic thing, it's costing us no money. The program we're involved with gave us the software, the doctors out of Brockton, they review any posts that they have to review, and all we have to do is make sure that we're testing the students. So that's continuing it. It does require some coordination, because you've got a high school and middle school, and you've got the wellness departments, and we just got to make sure that we continue to do it, that we find time in the curriculum. It takes, I'm told, it takes one to two days in a high school for each semester to do it, and I think that's a very small price to pay. And as part of that wellness discussion, I know Mr. Nassif starts talking about concussions. They start talking about the treatment of what to not do, what to do, how to be honest about it. So it ends up being a very good learning exercise for our students, so that continues, and I'm happy that it is continuing, and it wouldn't continue without the support of both Dr. Starkey and Mr. Potode at the two schools that have integrated into the wellness curriculum. So right now, we're, over a five-year period, we're covering, we're doing two testings over a five-year period. Okay? Any questions on baseline testing? Facilities? I'm going to lump the tennis courts and the outdoor track all together, because that was the recent repairs that we did, renovation. Right now, the tennis courts, they do have some cracks on them, as expected. For what we did with the tennis courts, we knew that they were eventually going to crack within a three- or four-year period, but not to the extent that they're not usable. They're still in very good shape. The contractor told us, because we were renovating them, we were not replacing them. The track, we replaced. The track is in outstanding shape, minus the 250 geese that travel on it each day, but there's not much we can do with it. That population seems to grow each year, and they seem to settle over by the track, the open space, but the track is in outstanding shape right now, and the difference is, you know, asphalt ages. Both the tennis court and the track are asphalt. The track's in great shape, because we replaced the entire thing. The tennis courts, we didn't replace the asphalt. We did a repair. It's in good shape, but I just want to know, I just want everybody to be aware that the cracks that are appearing right now were expected, they told us they would come, because the tennis courts are still over 25 years in age. It's no different than your driveway, that two cracks, you might be looking at your driveway for several years. I had my own driveway replaced pat last summer. I had two cracks I've been looking at for 10 years that bothered me every time I drove up. When I was going to have them resurface and go on top of it, they advised me, hey, for a few bucks more, those cracks are going to be back in four or five years. And so I just had them take the whole thing up and put a new one down. So it's all a matter of, the tennis courts are in good shape, we're happy with the renovation that was done to them, but there are some cracks that are appearing. This was not going to be a 20-year fix. This was a short-term fix, no different than you do with your driveway. The track, on the other hand, we did a more extensive repair on that. That's new asphalt, it's in great shape, and we seem to be keeping it in shape. We've managed the amount of flooding that it used to have, so it doesn't flood out in the winter anymore, and water on anything is not a good thing, so we no longer get water on one half of the track from the winter rains. So we're in very good shape with those two projects that were done recently. So, any questions on the track?
Can we have some type of plan, or what's going to be next for the track? How are we going to?
The track or the tennis courts?
The tennis courts, sorry. How are we going to be ahead of that, so that we don't run into a situation where we were a few years ago?
We might have to shut it down, yeah.
Yeah, well, right, so is there going to be some type of plan in action to keep that, to extend the use of that?
Yes.
What we did, some cost associated in the budget, and then, I'm assuming at some point in time, maybe down the road, it may need to be.
I think that's a capital improvement that Ashley might be able to expand on, but before we get to that point, facilities is already getting expandable caulking to put in it, and, you know, I walked them recently before we shut them down for the winter, and they're not in the playing areas, they're very acceptable. This is not unusual for asphalt tennis courts. Matter of fact, I don't even think they put asphalt in tennis courts anymore. Most of them go cement now. So we've got a lot of life out of this already, we're going to get more life out of it, and I know Greg Goodwin was talking to me, he was calling up different vendors, and this is something that we want to do in-house, too. If there's a smaller fix, you know, that we may need a vendor, that's further up the chain than me, but we're going to try to do some stuff in-house with expandable caulking in the joints to keep that moisture from getting in there and creating a bigger problem.
Mr. Clark?
Just to refresh my memory, what kind of warranty do we have with that track?
On the track? Oh, I'd have to look at the details. I'm sure it was a standard industry, I just don't know off the top of my head.
What I'm referring to are those, not the track specifically, but the area for the broad jump, same material, I believe?
Well, that, no, that's quite different. What we did there was, that's the same material, original material. It wasn't cost-effective for what we were paying for to replace all that. We sprayed that, so it was all the same color. That's not as critical, those areas, so we're not concerned with it, they're not cracking, but they are on a little different, there was a little different approach done on all the side pits. Those were basically repainted, I believe, Mr. Majeres, right?
Yeah, it was more of a blend of that. That was never part of the project, but to be consistent with the look that we had, that's what we kind of did, that resurfaced, so we don't have that same.
The reason I ask is, I know that one of them, multiple depressions all the way down the whole length of it.
Yeah, that's something we live with, because, once again, you know, asphalt ages, and those little small pits would be similar with the tennis courts. They're not used as often, they're not as critical in the items they do, but that's something, and it would be less, that would probably be an easier project on its own later on than the track and that together. That's from those daily dog walks, right?
Correct.
Jimmy, could you also speak to the line piece and what you're also looking at?
Well, the day they were laying the lines down, I asked the contractor straight up, because the lines are going to wear over a period of time, and he assured me that the cost to redo the lines every four or five years was not cost prohibitive at all. So that's something we're looking at, because if every four years, we can respray the lines that might be wearing, tearing, that's going to make that track pop and, you know, just keep it looking good. But the quality of the track, it's in very, very good shape right now. I'm impressed with what they did, there's been no movement of the track, there's no cracks on. There's been no movement of the track, there's no cracks on the track, it's held up in the weather, you know, we use it.
Again, just for history, keep in mind, the same vendor was putting the track on almost at the same time at Bryant University.
Correct.
As they did us, the same company. In fact, in that order, unfortunately for us at the time, no offense, Bryant was a little bit ahead of us, if you recall, those of you that were on the board at the time we were getting it done.
I'd be a bigger press tag.
I mean, so, quality work.
We might even have bumped a little bit. I think their penalty was greater than ours.
Maybe.
But, it's a, it's a local vendor too. They're out of born, so it works out very well that, they've come up here many times. That's, they were very pleased to do the job, because prior to that, they'd come up at least five times to redo it, and, and then we didn't do it. So, when we finally did it, it kind of gave us a little more credibility, because we, we call them often to come up, when something would get dinged from the track, you know, can you repair it? We want it repaired correctly. We haven't had any dings on the track at all, sometimes something hard will hit it that we don't know. You know, the campus is open, we don't lock it at night, so, you know, the fencing has been critical to keep vehicles off it, and, well, to keep vehicles off it. So, they're full aware of us, aware of us, a lot of them ran on that track, they were born athletes. So, we have a good rapport with them, and we're going to try to see what they can do to restrike that track, if not this summer, maybe next summer.
I guess just an overall athletic facility field question.
Yeah.
Is there a multi-year plan that is being submitted as part of the capital improvement to address either smaller or larger projects, right? So, I think this is what Derek's question is, how do we stay ahead, so that we're not in a desperate situation that we need to close it down or what have you?
Well, it comes right from the athletic department. We have to let you know what, what items are, are starting to deteriorate, and I'm not a very shy guy about letting you know when something has to be done. So, I don't know if there's an actual written one. We work very well with Greg Goodwin right now, and I'll mention the irrigation system, but it's the same thing. We'll, we'll mention things that are at least two or three years ahead of time. I'll mention to the central office, and they'll start putting it into a capital improvement plan. I know that, I think Ashley, you've already talked about the tennis courts as part of it.
Right. The tennis courts are on there, and like, small repairs to bleachers for the football field, things of that nature, those are on the capital, both small and large.
Pool, you know, we haven't talked to pool yet, but you know...
Yeah, we know there's items, you know, with all the items that we deal with in the athletic department, they're not things that you can just go down and fix them just like that. And so, we have to plan for them, and we're getting to the point, we're very happy with the direction that's going. I'll move on with the fields, because what we've done this year for the first time, and it was like anything that's new, it's not easy. We've always had a stadium field, and the stadium field's always been in great shape, because for the last 58 years, the football team practices on a 50-yard practice field. They don't use their field, except for games. And, when we lost the fields two years ago, we had to do something different. We knew we had issues with the irrigation, and Greg's done so much good, positive work. We've gone from four zones working to 19. He's found zones we didn't even have. We have two distinct irrigation systems that most don't know. The original one was the stadium field and the infield of the baseball. Before the renovation of 2000, that was, that's running off our drinking water system. And, shockingly, it's still running off the drinking water system. And, 180 feet of feet, feet of pipe will connect it into one system where we can use a whole irrigation system for all of them. Now, that's something we just discovered this past fall, and that's due to Greg in-house working hard and locating all these heads. So, the irrigation system, we figure it's only at 50% capability right now. It wasn't even close to that a year ago. So, we're moving in that direction, and it's not costing us a lot to do it. It's costing an individual out there caring about it, and Greg Goodwin's done an outstanding job of, of basically troubleshooting the area. So, that's going to help us. And what we did with the fields, every varsity team has practice fields. That's, that's our, we have 136 acres of campus. We have 15 acres of playing fields, 12 acres of actual game fields, and about three acres of practice fields. And what we do is we shorten the fields up, and whether it was soccer, field hockey, football, we're treating all our children the same now. They're all going on practice fields, and it's hard, it's hard to explain to a parent why their soccer field is completely burnt when they're out there for a month in August into September practicing on it every day, and then they have their game on it. So, it was painful at first, but the coaches and the players understood, because they saw the value of it, when they started going, using their field on game day, that what better condition it was. Now, the average parent comes and sees the game, they only come to 10 home games. The kids are on there for maybe 60 different days. So, we think we got it right finally after all these years, where we're going to have, we have actually practice fields and game fields. And, it's actually, it takes more work to do it. It takes more, because we do have to line some of the practice fields, we don't do it to the same degree, we have to take care of them. But the kids are responding. They're responding to the fact that they're seeing a better field, and therefore, we think we're going to be in much better shape a year from now, and from two years from now, with the irrigation going on, and with the, basically circulating players on different fields, we're going to be in pretty good shape out there. Because when our campus is cut and groomed, we've got an outstanding campus. But that's the challenge, we have 136 acres. So, I, I really think we're moving in the right direction with maintenance and operation of the fields themselves. They're healthier than they've been for a few years, and we've actually got a plan now to ensure that they stay healthy. Okay? And, the last bit of facility we're going to talk about is the pool. From what we can see right now, all the renovation done on the pool is operating as designed and as corrected. Obviously, there's some, we've had some hiccups in different areas. If you talk about boilers and water from different support pieces of the pool, that's connected to the entire school, that's going to happen. But, from the renovation we did, the ventilation, which was one of the big issues, it's, well, Steve, you can comment, you spend more time in it than I do. I think it's night and day. I used, I couldn't breathe in there when I'd walk into the, the pool area, and now it's pretty comfortable when you go in there. There's always going to be issues with pools, because it, it actually takes a daily grind of maintenance and daily grind attention to take care of it, but I think we're going in the right direction with that. So, I'm pleased with that. Is it 100% the way we want it? No. But it, it's getting there, and, and we will get there. And I think, in terms of facilities, that's all I'm going to mention, unless somebody else has anything else they want to bring up?
Jimmy, I don't know. Yeah, not to be facetious, but have you looked into anything about geese control? Because...
We have. I'll tell you what, we've got a long history here with geese, and they're smart. And, we've, we've had the wolves you've seen, we've posted them out there. They stay approximately 20 feet, and trust me, I watch them, 20 feet around, then you move it to the next day, and they stay 20 feet around that one. Believe it or not, one of the more successful periods of years ago was when one of our custodians ran beagles, and he'd bring his beagles and stake them out there during the day. But, I, that, that's actually frowned upon, so it's, it's very difficult. And, and I bring it up, because I've seen it getting larger, and what concerns me is when, when the flock migrates in front of grays, or in front of the high schools, it, it's a health and safety issue with, with what they're leaving behind. And, I'm telling you, with some, from somebody who spends a lot of time in our facility, after hours, a Sunday, you'll come out here, and I sat there and counted 250 geese one afternoon, and it's a problem. I don't have a solution for it. Not a solution that I want to keep my job, but we've asked people around, people have talked about the, putting the wolves down, we've done all that. Bob Souza worked very hard at doing that, but they would still land, and they would stay right around it, 20 feet around it. You move it another day, 20 feet radius around it. So, if you've got a solution for it, we're open for it.
One other point I wanted to make is my dog has an aversion to the fields, utilizes the woods for his needs, not for, not the athletic...
Oh, I watch you as you walk the tree line, Bob, don't worry.
Is the frowned upon the leash law, as far as releasing the dogs?
Uh, well, actually, there's no dogs on campus, but we'll leave it at that. And, the last...
I will say, golf courses use to release the dogs to solve the geese problem, but that's a much bigger conversation there.
Public municipality, we'd operate a little differently.
I hear you.
The last item, once again, I'm very happy with this, because we've had discussions of bringing revenue in, and we've tried advertising, and it didn't work in the community a few years ago, but for the second year in a row, to date, we've had $25,000 worth of donations that came into the athletic department. The first one was 15,000 from a private family organization that donated the sound, a new sound system into the gymnasium at a cost of 15,000. The second one, and this is the second year they've done this, is, we can't operate without them, the Athletic Booster Group, they donated $10,000 worth of equipment, and what they've been donating is big, large ticket items, soccer goals, lacrosse goals. And it was real critical the last two years, because if we were going to implement this practice field, game day field, you have to have more equipment, because now the kids would have to carry the equipment around back and forth, and that just doesn't add to the whole culture of it. So, they've been instrumental in allowing, allowing us to implement our field rotation system by having extra goals, extra equipment out there, so the kids can just, if it's good this day, you know, I feel it's in good shape, I can go over there. If it's not good, stay off it, guys, you're on your practice field. So, I want to thank the Athletic Booster Group, because that's two years in a row that they're, they're basically giving us a check for $10,000 and saying, go buy the equipment you need. That's equipment that we cannot get in the, the use-of-fee structure. It would put us over every single year, so we're very grateful for that. And obviously, the private donations, we're always up for private donations, and they earmarked it for the gym, because I, the family that was coming in didn't like the sound system we had, and said, improve it, and gave us a, an option to, not repair it, but replace it. So, that was, that was wonderful. So, to date, we're up to $25,000 donated, and hopefully, we'll work on a little more before the spring. And actually, that's, that's all I have.
Jimmy, if you just stay just for a second, just while you're, while you're here, just, and Ashley will present, but you also received some numbers in relation, and I'm going to have Ashley just speak to those with Jimmy present as well, if that's okay, at this time, rather than wait for his report.
Before we proceed to that, a question...
Yeah, I have a question back to facilities, before we get into the numbers piece of it. What's the future plan facility-wise? Because I, I see some needs on campus from a facility perspective, bathrooms, you know, we got the porta-johns out there during the...
That's, that's a good, that's a good question.
So, I'd like to, you know, the, the field itself, is there a game plan someday, or, I mean, these are big costs. If you look at a lot of schools now, are renovating their athletic fields, Towne and Dartmouth's doing it, they're in the middle of a, a big study. So, what's the future look like of the campus and its facilities? Because I'd like to see us be a little more accommodating to some of the needs that we have. You know, I go around to a lot of athletic facilities, and we do a great job, but we don't have, we're not as, have the luxury of other districts with, I mean, the football players, for instance, come in and, and go into separate directions, and sometimes, one of the teams stays out on the field, I've noticed, in different occasions. There aren't any restrooms, there, there are a couple of porta-johns there. Just this year, thankfully, they put a ticket booth in, that was a great gentleman built...
That was also a donation.
Yes, it was, and, and that was great. But, these are the things that you see as, as a nice, somewhat, some necessity-wise, but what does that look like for the athletic program? And some of this is just the, not even athletic related, it's just the facility need.
Well, we've looked into it, and with all due respect, we're just trying to hold on with the fields and stuff. What we need is about $50,000 for a, a proper snack shack, snack shack and bathrooms. That's something we've priced out, we've talked about, we've even, Dr. Starkey and I have even sat down with the booster groups to see if they could, what they could contribute. We're, we're a community of skilled labor too, Free Towne and Lakeville, we feel we could do it. There's no question this, that, that's in the game plan, because we don't have a proper snack shack, we don't have outside bathrooms. We don't let the visiting, the visiting teams, they can use, they use the locker rooms when they come, in football, they go up there and use it. If they're out on the field, they choose to be out there, because it's only a 10, 12-minute halftime, and they don't want to walk up. But mostly, it's for the parents and the people coming to the games. We have porta-johns, we'd like to not have porta-johns, but we don't have $50,000 for a building. We have, there's been site plans drawn up for it, it comes down, it comes down to, it comes down to money. And, that's something, when you look into the renovation, future renovations, maybe a capital improvement on the Red Barn or something else, that's something that might be able to tie it in, into that, because that's a, that's a fairly sized, good-sized project. Other communities have done it. They've done it because they probably already have a, a pretty good snack shack in place, and they're generating revenue. For instance, one of the local ones just bought a canteen that they parked in there, because they couldn't, you know, with, with all the border health codes, you have to make sure you have everything up to code. Right now, our snack shack with no hot water, they, they're very limited what they can, what they can serve and sell.
I, I think, I guess the, my point is here is, and I've been on this committee for a little while, I've never seen a set of plans or heard of that, and I'm glad that that's out there. But I, I think we may want to communicate that in certain instances, because maybe there's a capital campaign, if there's a vision, maybe we can help that along with, with these two communities. And, there's also the fact that there's a $50,000 cost, what does the revenue look like over X amount of years?
I would love to have a shot at it.
So, so I, I think, because there's big revenue being pulled out of some of the snack shacks and different...
And it's not coming out of the Ponacquay snack shack, trust me.
Right, so, right. So, so anyway, there's, there's a cost, but there's also a revenue factor that I, I think we'd be shortsighted not to consider.
It, it's going to take something very similar, because for instance, we would not have purchased that $25,000 van, we wouldn't have had the money for it, and you can look at it any way you want, that van with six or seven teams that can utilize it a year, and my estimate is every time a bus rolls, it costs us $400. My goal is to reduce the number of buses that are rolling. And, so depending on how many freshman games there are, that, that van's going to save us anywhere from 15,000 to 20,000 a year. We would be sending buses out now for half those teams. We did have an old van before, a seven-seat van that's been around a long time, Sherry, your kids might have traveled in it, and it just meant we sent less players there. We actually sent less players to golf and tennis competitions, because we could only fit seven in it. So, I agree with you, Derek, but it's going to take something bigger than, you know, we're not going to be able to raise money for it, we're going to have to, it's going to have to be a donation, it's going to have to be a shared responsibility, it's going to have to be a commitment to a capital improvement to get it in, to do it right, because with all the codes, I can't tell you what it took just to renovate the press box in our stands with all the code, to, to ensure that we stay within the code. And we certainly did not want to lose the press box, because we could not afford to put it back up there. Schools like, neighboring, some neighboring schools don't have press boxes, because they put new stands up, and they can't afford the codes to put a press box up there. So, you're absolutely right, we're open for anything, I'm hoping to get that big down payment or a donation for a possible snack shack, because we would get revenue off it. You then could now open it up for other sporting events, we only do it for a limited number of sporting events now. You could also have, you could also cook with it. We don't cook, and a lot of our games outdoors is during the meal hour. You would make money. If you've been involved in a youth program, you know how much comes out of those snack shacks. But eventually, someone has to bite the bullet to buy or to produce the, the shed, the building. And Dr. Starkey and I have had several conversations over the past few years about how we could do it, and we've tried to coax even some of the booster groups, whether it was music boosters, athletic boosters, but it's, it's, it's a big, it's a big chunk to commit to boosters, athletic boosters, but it's a big, it's a big chunk to commit to for a short period of time for them.
What I would say, though, especially with what we've been talking about at Regional FinCom, let's put the plan in place, let's put it to paper and get it up to the school committee level because there are conversations even outside of the operational budget about how do we fund overall capital improvements, and this is across the district. So especially if we can, from a regional FinCom or a full school committee, say that, yeah, this is a nice-to-have, but there is revenue potential on the flip side of it, especially where the towns are saying, well, how is the district going to raise money? This may have more traction.
And we only have so many opportunities to raise revenue in a municipality, it's just the way it is.
So I would say, let's think out of the box, let's figure that out. I think it's a great idea to figure out a combination between the Red Barn and snack shack and what have you, but let's get something, a plan, so that way we can at least have a conversation at the, either the regional FinCom level, and maybe the funding conversation is a combination of both. But, you know, we just, I think we just need a plan or the request to come either as part of the capital, overall capital piece.
And I think that's the broader conversation is, are we looking to move forward to a turf field? Are we looking to have a concession center? That's just the starting conversation, and now that it's out here tonight, Jim and I can go back, have that conversation, draw something up, put it to paper, and then bring it to Regional FinCom.
Yep, great. Any other questions on facilities or logistics from, that Mr. Cabuzio can answer before we talk about the finances? Great.
So in your packet, I've included an all-in with all funding sources, please disregard the three-year total title on that, I changed the format before I sent it out. It's just a snapshot in time as of December 31st, it was for last year and this year. You'll see that revenue was up almost $50,000. That might be because the winter sports have paid more timely, it might be because we've been reporting revenue in a better fashion. But we're, we see a spike in revenue, we also saw that was for user fees and then also gate receipts this year were up. We've talked about maybe that was because we moved the time of the football start time earlier.
We found the 6:30 start, we had a lot more students attending, and we saw the gates up.
You'll also see that there is a savings in the transportation. Because this is a snapshot, it doesn't include future encumbrances, it's really just the here and now. So far, to date, we've expended about $23,000 in transportation, and as you can see, that there was closer to $40,000 in the previous year. So that van is helping us, and we're hoping to keep those costs down as we move forward through the school year.
And what will be, what will not be reflected that with the van is that, because I'm the guy that gases it up, it's being used for field trips, it's being used for short trips around the town. It's really, Dr. Starkey, you'll attest to that, right? We're sending smaller groups out at a higher rate, costing us just the price of gas. And that's not going to be reflected on that because that goes beyond the athletic piece, that's, because that's not something that we're just going to say it's just for an athletic team. If we've got student council going out with seven, or more than seven, or eight, or nine, they're taking that van. I know they were, the middle school was delivering, are they delivering turkeys Thanksgiving with it? So we're getting our use out of that van right now. And some of the costs you're not always going to see on the sheet itself.
And you'll see, to date, the program is supporting itself outside of the coaches' salaries, which is carried in the general fund. Those are consistent year-over-year with a small 1% increase from last year. But we'll keep monitoring, but right now, we look like we're in better shape than we have been in prior years.
Any questions on the finance? Grace, here.
Quick question. The donations that you're receiving of these equipment from outside organizations and we've increased, it looks like we've increased some of our equipment, is there any unusual maintenance that goes along with that cost? Because we have additional equipment, I mean, the goalpost, probably just simple paint or something like that? Or any, something that we receive that requires anything outside the ordinary cost-wise?
A lot of it is soccer goals. If you walk the campus right now, and I have the habit of when I go visit other schools, I walk their campus, just leaving items out, we visited a school last night and the lacrosse goals were still laying out in the fields. All our stuff right now is stored underneath the stadium stands, so at least the weather's not on them. We'd like them to be indoors, we have a couple of containers. If you walk the campus, you're not going to find hurdles on there, you're not going to find soccer goals on there, we're taking the time to dismantle them. If people are spending the time to donate it, we're going to spend the time to take care of it. So a lot of the maintenance that's involved with that, it's, you know, keeping it looking good, painting them, making sure they're not rusting, you know, the nets aren't always going. So right now, the items that are being donated, I don't, I'm not saying they're maintenance-free, but we have to take care of them by storing them properly. So we're also doing a better storing items properly, rather than just leaving them out on the fields, you know, to rust from one year to another. So we're hoping to get a lot, a lot longer life out of them.
Any other questions?
No, there are no questions, I was just going to simply add, I mean, to Jim's point, so all of this will be included in kind of the big picture, you referenced the barn. I mean, I would caution anybody, and I'm not saying, I made a predetermination, that a turf field is the way to go for any school district. I know many schools, out of convenience, are doing that. The struggle is, you don't have multiple turf fields. So now you're placing all of your teams on a, on a small area. We have the luxury of a lot of space, which a lot of districts don't have. And just keep in mind, our field, where our field hockey kids play, for example, our girls are down on the other side across, so facilities up here really don't help that in soccer and take that into account. The barn's a significant issue because it maintains a lot of the tractors, it's something the town is well aware of, we've included even some conversations with building inspector, and you'll see as we build and move forward, it needs to be included in conversations that we have, the fields themselves, obviously, the barn. You're certainly speaking to, he's referenced Greg Goodwin, but anybody that knows Jimmy pretty well knows that if anybody's out in that field, spending most of their seven days a week, it's this guy in relation, and he wouldn't say it, and so before he steps away, I want to certainly not only commend him for the students' representation, which is what it should be and what it is all about here and how successful, but really kind of where we've taken it. We're just scratching really the surface. It's my fifth year here, I'm thrilled to, you know, be working with him and the administration because I think we have such great potential. If, for any of you that have children that go to other communities and other facilities and see, we have so much more to offer here in relation to the space. It's a, it's really just making sure we maximize and prioritize some things. Keep in mind, when I got here, multiple years ago, they said we wouldn't get a new track, they said the pool needed work, they said the tennis court wouldn't get done. All really people that I've heard over and over again, and I know Derek and Steve, you tried to say it through Regional FinCom, they want to see a plan. And so Ashley's, we're going to work closely with Jimmy and we'll try to incorporate those. Again, keep in mind, offense to our athletic director after I complimented him nicely, I'm not going to isolate and separate the athletics though, right? We've got to consider the entire campus, the heating systems, the schools that we have here functioning, and that's where we need to make sure it's all there, and then we can kind of prioritize where it needs to be. But Jimmy does a great job with leadership with his coaches, I'm thrilled with what they've done.
In all fairness, with priority one to Mr. Cabuzio, may not be priority one across the board, but...
Well, I don't know, I think that snack shack's pretty attempting.
Mr. Gray.
Yeah, just to back up one, I don't want to make the mistake that I'm suggesting a turf field is the way. I wanted to say, that's the thought process, all right? So what is the best use for our facilities? What does the fields look like? It doesn't have to be turf, it could be receding, I don't know.
Anyway, I agree 100, that this revolving of the fields, this is earthshaking for us right now. Because I personally feel, with the amount of time I've spent on them over the 30 years, this is going to have a bigger impact on our athletic department than any money you throw at us. Because if we're rotating the fields properly, and we've got a gentleman out there willing to put in the work to make sure we rotate it properly for the kids, we're going to have a facility we're very proud of. And that is our strength, 136 acres, 15 acres of actual varsity fields. And if we can do that, see, I agree with Mr. Maderas, one turf field's not enough. When I talk to people, if you don't have two, then you've got kids constantly whining that they're not on a field, they can't put them on a field, only one, one group can be on the field at a time. So, and usually, you know, so you really, it's a much bigger project than you're talking here than just one turf field. You're talking several turf fields, you're talking a big picture with that. What we have right now in rotating our fields properly, will we take a turf field? Absolutely, we'd take a turf field. But we want a shot at rotating these fields properly, making sure we have practice fields, playing fields. We've got a booster group willing to buy us equipment to allow us to implement it. So right now, short-term, short-term, two or three years, I want to see where we are in two or three years with the program that we've instituted the last two years, with the staff we have there right now. Let's see what happens from there. And then, once you get, personally, I think if you don't have decent playing fields, you don't have an athletic department. Your kids are the most important thing, and to put them on something that's not safe, it's, that's hard. And it's marching orders to all our coaches. If you go to a visiting field and you do not feel it's safe to play on, we support you 100% to get on the bus and come back, and we'll deal with it at the administrative level. So I think the playing fields are your athletic department for your kids. So we're taking a shot at this right now, and let's see, not next year, but two years from now where we're at.
Any other questions?
Jimmy hasn't mentioned at all, I know it's unlikely, but even the gymnasium hasn't been mentioned, but the condition of that and the resurfacing and where we're at.
The gymnasium, listen, we're very, very happy with that, with the structure that's been there since '58, the footprint hasn't changed since then. I believe we fixed the fans last winter, the fans had not worked in there for a five-year period. So it's simple things like that that make me very happy, that we can flip the fans on during a game when there's 400 people in there. And now, a lot of our older fans, we don't feel as bad because it gets very hot in the gym. So we're in pretty good shape with there, the surface, the gym itself, it's presentable, we'd like it bigger, but this is the footprint we have. So what we're trying to do is, we're trying to work within the footprints that we have. Can we, you know, there's no reason they can't be clean, there's no reason they can't work properly. And we have our hands full with that in this district right now, because we have a lot of things that have to be looked at. And it's that daily grind, and we're getting there, but it does take time. And actually, the support of the committee, we couldn't do this without the support of the committee because it does take money, it does take staffing, it does take administrators to value it, and if they don't, then municipalities go down very, very quickly. And I think we're on the rise right now, I really do. I really do.
Anything else? Well, thank you very much, this is actually great, I, you know, the superintendent and I, we've had this conversation, and it applies to athletic, is how do we market ourselves better? Right? And some of the information that you presented about, and particularly the four years in a row of the outstanding sportsmanship to the school, this is information that we should be putting out there, maybe it'll be a headline in this week's edition of the Standard Times, but how do we do that beyond the, what we do today? And I know we get a great snapshot at the graduation speech, whatever, but these are the key things that we need to let our, particularly our two communities know, and just figuring out a game plan about how do we do that better? You know, we do a good job, but how do we do it better to get that information out there? But thank you very much for...
No, I agree. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks. 6A, under old business, FY '19, '20 budget updates.
I have a short update this week, I've updated your charts to reflect the actuals as of January 3rd. Where Statsco and FY '19, I continue to monitor the usual suspects of custodial maintenance, utilities, special education, add district, and overtime. This past week, I've looked a little bit more into the substitutes, whereabouts where we were last year at this time, so there's not much to report there, we're going to continue monitoring them. We're looking for the daily attendance to see who's out, and we'll go from there. The assessment sheet's included in your packet. I've also, the projected E and D for FY '19 is there, there are no changes from our last meeting. And then for the FY '20 budget, finalizing the recommended budget, we have a meeting with the regional finance committee next week, where I'm going to provide them with the debt schedule that I provided the committee the last meeting, and we're also going to give a brief update on FY '20.
Any questions on that? None, moving on. 6B, class size, transportation.
I will have updates, we can present it in December, so at our next meeting, we'll have some updates there.
Sorry, just to go back, just to ask my typical question, there, for this year, there haven't been any new, net new positions added to our current staffing outside of replacing new hires, whatever, there hasn't been any, for example, any new IUPs that requires another position or anything like that, so we're at the same flat line for staffing, correct?
Yeah, anything that's new, anything, any new posting that went out is a replacement or resignation of time, correct?
Any questions on that? New business, MSBA 2019 statement of interest.
So I'm looking for some, well, in your packet, you received a letter, which was, I think I had provided it earlier, in relation to last year's statement of interest, that's two years now that we've submitted a statement of interest, and we had talked last time. I guess the real question, and I provided the email that was sent to both, to Ashley and to me, about the new timeline for 2019, and so I just am looking for some direction, probably something we should have a discussion with Regional FinCom as well, but whether we intend to submit another statement of interest for Assamset, which would be a third consecutive year. Again, we can do that, or do we pursue some other options as it relates? And so ultimately, if we are going to submit a statement of interest, and it's pointed out here, this committee has to take formal action, vote, it then has to go to the towns if it involves a town building in or the region. So if it's Assamset, obviously, we'd have to have the board of selectmen in Lakeville take action in support of that, so...
Is it fair to say, since the first year, we made the short list, the second year, we didn't make any list, that the third year, we're probably going to move further down the list? Because the, the condition hasn't changed, quite frankly, as we saw in the email, there have been improvements in that particular case.
Yeah, I'm not optimistic, quite candidly, based on, based on the most recent report that you received.
So I'd like to propose that the direction is, there is no action, no further action as it relates to the current statement of interest, but I'll open it up to the rest of the committee for thoughts or...
So the one thing that I would add, if that's the case, and I think Derek has a...
Sure. Say it again.
Yeah, I think I overheard Gene, and I kind of agree, and the only reason, I asked two questions, was it a take to put this together, time-wise? That's question number one. And my second question, and this is where I'd caution, is I don't want to be looked upon by the Towne of Lakeville of we're not doing our part to try to get money, and I think that's something that we continually hear. If this is a simple application, I think we go through the motion and we do it. I don't want to hear from the Towne of Lakeville, "Hey, you folks didn't attempt to get money here." I do agree with Steve that with the Towne of Lakeville's support over there, it's sliding us down the priority scale for the state, it probably will be that way. Maybe we make one more pitch at it. That's my, my one question.
And I'm glad you do choose, I feel the same way.
My only hesitation for that is, the two key areas for Assamset right now is, and one was driven by the town, is the energy grant that's associated, not necessarily towards Assamset, and we have undergone that for the main campus, we're in that process, we haven't had all the feedback. The other is the parking lot. This statement of interest is not going to solve either one of those, right? So, but I don't know if we answered Derek's question about the level of effort to put it together.
Yeah, that's an easy one. The easiest answer is to, the easiest work is, is to submit the current statement of interest, you're updating that. The vast majority of the work has already been done by the director of facilities. So to submit another statement of interest for Assamset in its entirety, as we have done the last two years, minimal work required. Mr. Souza, Mr. Souza may make a difference on my minimal, on describing, but the reality is, the majority of the work was done that first year. If you recall, when we presented last year, we said, "We just need to provide any updates that, anything that's transpired between now and the last time." Having said that, I may, and we can have discussion, we may want to ask that the finance director meet again with the director of facilities and for our January 23rd meeting in two weeks, make a recommendation, because there, you can submit a statement of interest, and if you look at the, if you had a chance to look at what I provided, there are actually two separate programs, the core program, a large school piece, and smaller program, system-based, that may address some efficiency. And it may be worth, this committee's, before taking formal action, although it's a pretty simple task, you could do it on the 23rd as well, take action, say, "We're going to submit a statement of interest for the school," to just get some more feedback from the director of facilities through the director of finance for next meeting. I don't want to cut short the conversation, but...
I'm okay with that unless...
You can, you can also submit, by the way, multiple, if that next question comes up, you can submit multiple statement of interests. I've been in a district where I submitted a statement of interest for multiple schools. It's not necessarily always...
Higher priorities.
The ideal circumstance, because they'll ask you to prioritize, but it's certainly possible, so I wasn't, and that's why it's not necessarily stated here, is a vote required tonight, I wanted to bring to your attention the timeline. We need to be sensitive to that, especially in the fact, in light that we have to bring it to the Towne of Lakeville. It's something we probably should discuss at Regional FinCom too. Without the support of the Towne of Lakeville, we can't proceed with a statement of interest, they've agreed the last two years. Doesn't preclude you from submitting it, it also doesn't preclude maybe another recommendation on a smaller scale in relation to things. Part of the issue with parking lots and things, there's some, it doesn't qualify under the, under the building authority piece.
Yep.
So that's somewhat problematic, but the energy efficiency piece and things are, are things we could take a look at.
Any other questions, comments? Any objection with the advice of the administration to have a follow-up on the 23rd based upon a recommendation from the director of finance and the director of facility?
Makes sense.
All right, we'll proceed with that, we're adding to the next agenda. 7B, left grant donation.
In your initial packet, that I think I sent you electronically, you first saw the grant, the generous donation that was made, the final donation that was made with a cover letter that came from the larger group, and then most recently, Mr. Burke forwarded me the email, which I forwarded you electronically. I would ask that it be accepted as presented, as opposed to necessarily reading the entire document, but it was, and I think it was well done by Mr. Burke, representative of all those individuals who helped with that organization. It was outstanding, I certainly would like to share with the Standard Times that's here It was outstanding. I certainly would like to share with the Standard Times that's here presenting, because it does reflect the commitment that many individuals made towards the school. So, um, I would recommend that this donation be accepted as the last grant. But I think the background there was well done by Mr. Burke. I wanted to share that with you electronically and as a group tonight.
I'll entertain a motion to accept the donation and the letter as presented. I have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Abstention? Passed unanimously?
I, I would just note for the, for the community and the camera, that the final, the final donation was in the total of $6,654.94.
And that, that is currently earmarked towards technology as-
Yes.
Correct?
Correct.
Yep.
So that was, that was, that closes that foundation's final dollars.
I guess we won't be doing Iron Chef.
All right, 7C, child development study request. Did you have a question?
No. We were just talking about the trophy that we won.
Oh.
For the Iron Chef.
So do we-
No.
Reigning, no. All right, sorry, child development study request.
Yes.
How are you? I, as long as you speak loudly, but I'm sure, yes, they would prefer you have that.
Hi, everybody. Um, thanks for having me here. Um, I'm just here tonight to talk about two things. First of all, several weeks ago, I was contacted by Dr. Jane Nash, um, asking that the children in fourth and fifth grade, through the extended programs, be part of a study. Um, before going further and giving her an answer, I reached out to Dr. Sullivan, and she was very much on board with it. Um, I think it's a good fit for the fourth and fifth graders. Um, I'll let Dr. Nash go into it. Then I reached out to Mr. Maderas, and he said that I had to bring it in front of you. That's the reason why we're here tonight. So I'd like to introduce Dr. Nash.
Hi, um, thanks for giving us the opportunity to, um, present this. So basically, I'm working with a colleague at Bryant University. Um, this study has gone through the Stone Hills Institutional Review Board, so we have gotten, um, okay. And in fact, we've been collecting data already. We've been to several, um, schools in Massachusetts and my colleagues working in, in Rhode Island. And basically, we're interested in looking at children's understanding of healthy and ill peers. And so the idea, sort of the big idea that we're trying to get at is when children maybe have been, um, away from school because of illness. And one of, the literature really shows that one of the issues that's difficult for them is not getting back in academically, but more socially. And so we're looking at, we've created some vignettes, um, of, um, children who have gone to a camp, um, and have been successful at being able to, to be at the camp. And so we're, we're showing that to children and then letting them make some, asking them some questions, like, would you be, would you be interested in being friends with this person and so on? And so, um, so basically, they would be answering questions. Um, we've been working, um, with kids. They're really into it, actually. Kids actually, they're, ask us a lot of questions. They, they seem to be, um, interested in what we're doing. Um, so they would see, um, you know, a short fictional story, and then they answer questions about that child, and then they're, answer some questions about their, um, knowledge of illness. And, um, we have, at the end, a, um, video. We do debriefing and telling them about what kind of, what some of the things we were studying. And then, um, there's a video at the end of a child who's gone to, actually, it's, um, a clip from, um, a child who was at the Hole-in-the-Wall Gang Camp in Connecticut. And she's climbing a rock wall and kind of talks, the parents are talking about how this was such a great experience and that kind of thing. So, um, of course, you know, we are, um, both of my colleague and myself, we've done a lot of research. We're very much understand about confidentiality, and we would never, um, we won't, won't be working with anybody. I mean, the first thing we do is get okay from the director of the program. Then the second step would be getting, um, consent forms from all the parents. And then we even have a third step, the child, who's, you know, 10. We actually tell them a little bit and say, your parent or guardian said you could do this, but you're old enough to make a decision. Do you want to do this? And we actually have a child assent as well. So, and at any point, you know, they can, it usually takes about 15, 20 minutes. And, um, we are going into the schools during the after-school program. And we typically, you know, we've been, different settings. Um, we usually are off, depends where the kids are, maybe off to one part of the gym. We have them, um, it's on, presented on a tablet. And so they wear headphones, so it's quieter if it's, but we try, if we can have, to be in a slightly less noisy area. But, um, I'm happy to take any questions. Yep.
I, I just, I guess, a couple of comments, and just for the committee, um, in conversation with the vice chair. It will, does not require a vote of this committee to go involved, but we appreciate the heads up in this. Uh, what I would like to see, though, from the program, is some written acknowledgement, because this is a district program, that you understand our, and agree to adhere to our student data privacy guidelines, as well as our Cory and fingerprint guidelines. I think those are, and there's probably a few other ones, but I think it's important to-
Yes.
Make sure that, we are at least making sure that these, these two are being acknowledged and are being adhered to.
Absolutely.
I, I'll open up the questions from the, the rest of the committee.
Quick one, because I lived through this. I had a kid that was very ill. But I want to know, at the end of all this, will we actually get anything?
So, one of the things that we have been, with all the programs we talk to, so if the director, we ask a director, you know, would that be some, would you be interested in, in findings? We actually ask parents as well, sometimes individual parents, because the parents are going to be filling out a checklist. So we have a, um, an email or a, or a snail mail on a parent. So a parent can actually also say, at the, at the conclusion of the study, we'd be interested. And we're probably, because each child's run individually, we'll be collecting at least through this next school, you know, through probably May or June. So we don't anticipate having results, uh, in the very near future, but absolutely. I mean, that would be the whole point.
That would be great. Thank you.
Absolutely.
Anything else by the committee? I will say, it's a little bit ironic that for a health survey that we're incentivizing 10-year-old students with a $5 Starbucks gift card.
Oh, that's actually for the parents. The parents are getting the Starbucks gift cards. The, um, the, um, the, the children, the children get a slinky, and they like that. It's, it's amazing how excited they are to get a slinky, yeah. Children are getting a slinky, the parents are getting a Starbucks.
Okay. Thanks for the clarification on that one, I was a little-
So the Cory, as you referenced, the Cory will go through Lisa's, Lisa's program and fingerprinting, if, if it's been done by those individuals, we can get a suit of those. We'll follow the same format.
As long as we check the box.
We just want to check the box.
Absolutely.
Great.
Of course, yeah.
Thank you. Oh, Sherry, I'm sorry.
Everything was great until your last statement. So the children whose parents do not want them to participate?
Oh, I'm sorry. Okay, yes.
The children whose parents choose not to have their child participate? They don't get anything?
So, so basically, the way that works is, um, the, the invitation would go to the parents, and then whoever, whosoever parent sent, sends the consent form back, or the children that we would meet with.
I'm concerned about the prize at the end.
Oh, at the end, um.
So in other words, some kids are going to go home with a prize and some are not, because their parents said that they would prefer not to.
Yeah, I mean, that is how it has been.
Does it have to be a prize?
Well, I mean, we don't have to do anything. We always have thought, we feel like it, it was a nice way to thank a child for their time, but is that a concern?
It is for me. I think we're, we're thanking the parent for allowing the child. And I think if the child really enjoys it, it should be prized enough.
I mean, one possibility, Lisa's just saying that we could do it at the very end.
Maybe at the end, maybe just give everything to the parent in a bag, so then that way, it's not at the program and nobody knows about it. And so maybe we keep everything confidential. I, I'm not so sure. I'm not sure how many kids are going to participate. We might just have 10. But I know that we have pencils and things like that, that we can give to everybody. But I think a way to offset that is just to give everything to the parent at the end of, of, of the, um, interview.
Sorry, I guess I misunderstood. Are you concerned about those kids that are not called over and participating and are not getting some recognition?
I would take, we're delighted to have as many participants as we can have, absolutely.
They're not participating. I don't see a concern of not getting a Twinkie, but-
If I could just add, we've had a lot of reading incentive programs where kids have goals. And the ones that meet the goals get something. The ones that don't, don't meet the goals, don't.
It's, I agree with you, Gina, except for that's up to the child. If the child met the goal-
Well, no, this is a parent-child contract. This is what I'm talking about. The contract's with the family, and it takes everybody. I, I hear what you're saying.
Just from being in the classroom, just my thoughts.
I think, I think if we hold it till the end, I think that that won't interfere with anything. Okay, thanks. That's perfect.
Is that okay? That's perfect.
And I can ask, Lisa will provide for me an update with the number of students that have, you know, as we, as we move through this, this next semester, and just to give, we'll keep the committee updated as far as informationally, how many students actually did participate.
Yeah.
You can get that information, too.
Mr. Sylvia.
Is the response rate, like, how many students or families usually consent to participate?
So, well, that's actually a good question. I mean, a, a lot of school districts have, that we've been working with, have a smaller number of fourth and fifth graders. So you, I was surprised at how many, Lisa had said that you have.
Um, we have 60 to 65 in the, in the after-school program for fourth and fifth grade.
So I think if, it, when we have a lot of support from the director and that, that, when the director's really on board and actually, um, has a good relationship with the parents, we actually get a really pretty good rate. But part of it just has to do with how many kids I, that, that fit, that, the fit, say, fourth to fifth grade, and sometimes that's not very many.
Thanks. Thank you very much. Appreciate it.
Thank you very much. There is one more thing. Um, it's not on the agenda, but Mr. Maderas told me to make sure that I brought it up tonight. Um, and that was the increase in the, um, minimum wage that began in January. Um, I did send a memo out and a chart to Ashley. If you don't want to talk about it tonight, I certainly can hand everybody out the same memo and the same chart. And if you don't mind, we can probably talk about it at your January meeting, or I can talk about anything that you need to talk about right now.
I think it makes sense to put it at our regular scheduled update, but I think it's important that we don't hold anything up, right? We're at least applying, obligated by the law. And then we can talk about a refresh of that pay schedule at your scheduled update, if that makes-
So I don't have a, sorry.
So Lisa's got, Ashley intends to respond, not only to her program, but to all the programs, and we'll have an update in her report tonight, which will be inclusive of what Lisa referenced.
Excellent, okay.
Because I don't have an update. I won't be here on February 6th, so I won't be in front of you. So I just want to make sure that, um, with any questions that you have regarding how it affects the programs, you can always ask.
Okay.
We'll be sure of that.
But we can schedule a date that's outside of the February 6th, if necessary.
If we need to, yeah.
Yeah, so, okay. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Dr. Nash.
Does that mean that I start to pay them, or do I wait?
No, we need to, we need to implement it effective now. And we're going to do that each, each of us.
Don't wait.
Absolutely not.
Not like we have the power to prevent the state law. Yep, nope.
So the, so the real, so the, the logistics piece is, the law took effect, whether you vote or not. So we need to be sure that we're, we're in line with that piece. The larger piece is the voting and acceptance of the salary chart, which is inclusive of her program, but also impacts the pool and the campus programs. That's something that Ashley will be able to provide for you. You can take action, even if it's after the fact. We've done that routinely with donations and things like that, right? We've accepted things and done something after, so.
What I'd like to see, though, is make sure that that plan is a multi-year plan, because-
We've got two more years or three, yeah.
Four or five more years are just coming, at least till 2023, so.
As the, as the minimum wage moves up.
The impact of the program, what we're doing to offset it, so that aspect of it, so.
Yep.
So yes, we shouldn't hold anything up as far as implementing what went into effect January 1st, but I'd like to see an overall plan as far as what that recommendation of that chart would look like from there.
So the chart that I did do does take that into effect? Yeah, no, it does take everything into effect, because I wanted to make sure that, and I'd have to come back and do this again.
Yes.
Good move.
We're still going to have you come back every year anyways, but just not related to-
Not with the chart.
Not the chart.
Yeah, so the new chart that I have, and you'll get, it is reflective of all of that.
And Dr. Nash, thank you very much for coming and-
Thank you.
Good luck.
Thank you. Happy New Year.
Happy New Year.
Uh, 7D, surplus of special ed van.
Want to approve?
I have a motion, can I hear a second?
Second.
Motion is second. Any discussion? Does Ashley want to slide in anything for a vote? Great, hearing none, all in favor? Any opposed? Any abstention? Passed unanimously. I, I do have a question on surplus. Any getting rid of the surplus that has a financial return? Does that just go into E and D, or what happens to that?
It goes into miscellaneous revenue, and then will circulate into E.
And then it goes back into E. Thank you very much. Uh, reports to the committee, Ms. Loeb.
Another short report to talk about what Lisa, with minimum wage. Um, I'm waiting to get documentation from our other two activities, our groups, the community programs, and then also the pool. And they're both working on that, so I'll bring it. It'll be all-inclusive to the next meeting.
What Lisa submitted to her this week, if you're going to try to session, was just her program with reference to the others, which, which is what Lisa should be doing. Ashley's reached out to those other program directors, and we'll have an entire chart that's all-inclusive of all the programs.
And with that, we do have our contractual obligations, even with the increases that are coming up. I believe we're all set based upon our existing contract. Is that correct?
In relation to the minimum wage increase?
Yes.
Yes, yeah.
Okay.
There is no-
Yeah, I didn't think so, but I just want to hear confirmation. So it's mainly the community programs?
One thing we're taking, we're taking a look at is our substitute rates.
Okay.
Is that low?
Yep, okay.
So depending on how you want to do your math, you could justify it. We need to take a look at it, though. $75 a day, $60 a day.
That's what it is currently.
Yeah, it's terrible.
It was just raised to 85.
Any question for Ms. Loeb? All right, hearing none. Ms. Curlin, Director of Services.
Do you want me to just talk to the ladies?
Oh, will you not, Ben?
No.
You said you had a short update. I was like, okay.
I thought maybe you didn't have any questions when going over it. Um, I just wanted to give an update with the hot water boiler. Sreetown, as all said, the repair was done over the holiday break. Um, and just to update the committee, there was a leak in Grace over the new year. It was found within 30 to 60 minutes of the leak occurring, um, which we're all very happy about, because we could have had a lot more damage into the locker room. And it was repaired on January 2nd. We filed an insurance claim and have been moving forward with that. Um, utilities, again, we're still monitoring them. I will keep you updated if anything spikes. And then Regional FinCom is next week. Short?
Yeah.
I'm all set.
My apologies in that. Sorry.
Freakon was replaced or repaired?
Replaced.
Replaced.
And I, there, I don't know if there was confusion the last meeting about the Grace hot water boiler. We did a, a repair, not a replacement. That boiler is actually made in sections, and it's meant to be repaired, not necessarily replaced at once. So we had a section that failed. It had a crack in it earlier this month, and it was repaired. Unfortunately, we had another leak, and we had to get that repaired in the beginning of January. So we've had two in the Grace.
How old was that boiler in Sreetown? Seventy-eight?
Thirteen, wasn't it?
Seventy, yeah, it was seventy-eight, something of that nature. It was-
Antique.
It was. There's, and also, so I did talk to the town administrator today. I'm going to be sending him over a memo with some pictures of the old one and the new one, so he can present to the board of selectmen.
Any other questions?
Well, I, I do, I've never heard of modular boilers. That's what we have, basically, huh?
1978.
No, that's the other one.
Well, no, that was the Sreetown Elementary Water Boiler. The Grace boiler setup?
It's a, that's interesting. That's great.
And Rick did get a first-hand look at it, so he-
I, I went, I needed, I had some curiosity. I was up there, because I wanted to take a look. And I also was concerned, because we did have, we had two significant repairs. And I, I was questioning, speaking to the chair, going to Regional FinCom, And I, I was questioning, speaking to the chair, going to Regional FinCom, you know, kind of like you have the ancient, the, the old car, how much money are we putting, what's the investment there? And is it better to do a full replacement? Totally different situation when I was up there to physically see that we're just taking out a compartment of what is a pretty high-functioning boiler right now. There's multiple boilers up there, so there are three. And one is specifically geared towards, and this is the one, that was the issue, taking care of the pool, in addition to some additions. So, at Grace, you have to have, you're, you're heating the building with two boilers, actually heating it, one in the backup, and this other boiler, and that's the boiler that happened to have the problem. You know, where it became, I think, more evident, and more people were made aware of it, quite frankly, is that where the boilers sit, I would have loved to have seen the logic behind it, is right on top of the locker rooms at Grace, over there. Again, I'm well out of my realm of expertise, but obviously, so any leak you have, because you can't seal or allow things to drain, you, you tend to get some issues there, which is a little problematic, so.
Two things. I know we're looking at, it does leak a pretty liquid that actually has a stench to this. So, we are, we're pretty confident that there is no impact safety-wise to the student, but we were just getting some expert opinions on that.
The director of facilities, per request of the chair, had asked me to follow up with the vendor and our director of facilities, who also, who was, is, is not concerned in relation, based on that, but, but is vouched for that. Ultimately, you could bring a hygienist in. We can bring an outside piece if, if we had some concerns. The director of facilities, the chair with me, did not have concerns. Vendor was a little uncomfortable. The vendor, meaning Advanced Day, who did the work, because they're not hygienists, to make statements other than state what, what it is.
Well, that's where you start. You just need to know what the substance is.
So, that's, so that's what's happening.
And then the only other piece is obviously the cleanup. Can we apply the cleanup cost to the insurance claim?
Usually you can.
Bob's been looking into that.
Yeah, because it's going to extend to power wash, or something to that effect.
Mole.
It's pretty...
So, as we, before we move away from Ash, just so, the, the chart will be provided in relation to salaries, going back to the wage piece. I may also include some reference to substitutes, even though it's technically, that doesn't fall under that same chart for future reference. Could be a significant, significant cost. I just want you to know, we've talked about substitute lines and the cost, just a per diem rate change. But I obviously wanted to make sure that's consistent with the, the increase.
Okay. Sorry, come back to you again. Ms. Carlin.
Thank you very much. So, I was asked at the last meeting to provide an update on the social emotional learning program at AES. As you know, in September, the district launched this program. At the time of the conclusion of last school year, there were three students slated to be in the program, along with a lead teacher and two paraprofessionals. Subsequently, that has grown to a total of six students. And we've been able to bypass use of the collaboratives or other programs in order to meet the students' needs in district. So, basically, the students work on their own individual behavior plan, and they learn to access the skills that they'll need to be successful, both in the general curriculum setting, and as they move through their educational career. The, two of the students are currently partially included for parts to start that generalization process, and the others are primarily within that substantially separate program. And it is running very well, and it is, it's been fantastic.
Ms. Barron.
Of the children that are partially included?
Yes.
So, what you're saying is some part of the day they're in this program, and the other part of the day they're in with the general population?
Yes, that's correct.
In their classroom.
Right. And so, the, the paraprofessional would go in with them to support their behavior and to, you know, prompt them, to keep them regulated and on task. So...
So, those children that are going into their classroom go with a paraprofessional?
Yes.
That stays with them the whole time?
Yes.
So, I'm assuming that the two do not go at the same time, leaving the teacher by him?
The two actually are in the same grade, and they will go in together. So, there's...
They're in the same classroom?
Yes.
Perfect. Okay.
So, thank you. Yeah, the way it panned out, we have two students in each grade. So, that has been nice.
Grace here.
What's the sustainability of the program?
It's very sustainable. In fact, it will, it will grow. So, these would be tuitions that we'd be paying to the collaboratives that we're maintaining in district and saving the, you know, the time and expense of transportation. That also takes a toll on the, the students and their families as well.
So, when you say grow, you anticipate further students needing, other, more students needing this program?
Yes, quite, yes. We need to look at, you know, as, as they sort of grow and move on, we have to think about a continuum of, of programming for them, depending on their needs.
Any other questions?
Steve, just one classroom teacher and one paraprofessional?
No, one lead teacher and then two paraprofessionals. So, it's currently a two-to-one ratio.
I'm still confused. So, when those two children, those two students go with their paraprofessional, that leaves four, four students, the teacher and a paraprofessional?
Yes, that's correct.
Okay.
So, and there's been, you know, no incidents to report. Things have just been moving, I, I would say probably better than expected with a new program. You know, the, it's a new teacher and, and new paraprofessionals, so they're learning to work together and, you know, develop a, a classroom, you know, culture. So, it's been, it's been going well.
Are there, I guess, a, it's just at AES right now?
That's correct, yes.
Are we planning?
It's a district program.
It's a district program.
Available.
Okay, okay, got it.
It is housed at it.
That's correct. So, much like the preschool is at FES, it's a, it's a district program. Right. So, if we have a student with a need at FES, they would then transfer schools to go to that program. So...
All right. Anything else?
No, unless, there's any more questions on this.
Any further questions, Ms. Barron?
So, your report says that we're now fully staffed in the Special Education Department.
Yes.
Can you expand on that a little bit?
We had some retirements and departures, so we've now filled those vacancies. So, I believe there's one outstanding position for a bus monitor, which we have a lead on, actually, as of today. So...
And does that include special education pairs?
Yes.
So, you feel as though we are covered well with special education pairs?
I do, yes.
Yeah, so, so that sentence was, we've had several months now where we've had long-term substitutes and things. We're in our best situation at having secured individuals for those positions as we speak, with the exception of the monitor. I think you're going to see in the, for the little sneak preview into '20, some potential additional supports that we're going to project that may be needed as we look towards next year. But for this year, as, as we said, I think we're in good shape.
Sylvia.
Back to the substitute. For a long-term substitute position, is there a bump in the...
There, there is. There is. So, as Ashley's kind of sitting here earlier, pointed out, again, not a requirement for substitutes and, and monitors and things to, to, to address the minimum wage piece, just to make you aware. But it's something, I think, in good faith, we need to take a look at. We have a, a policy within the district that I inherited, that I continue to maintain, which is after 10 consecutive workdays and an assignment, they go to a step one, schedule one of a first year, of a first year teacher, per diem rate. Pretty significant bump. It ends up being about $225. So, let me just, so if I could clarify, I'm not opposed to it, by the way. I've been supportive, and we have some discretion there. So, a person starts out as, as a daily substitute, and if they substitute for the entire year, but just fill in for a variety of issues, they're not doing lesson plans, they're, you know, they're providing some, they'll receive the $75 stipend. If they take on an assignment where they are, one, certified, because now long-term subs need to be certified, if they are certified, and we're asking them to do above and beyond, and, and some districts, I think, to Steve's point, if I may, and you jump in, districts will kind of tier it. So, you'll go from 75 to 125 to 150. We don't tier it, so we're not gradually building up. Some will go one, at 10 days, 20 days. Our current practice, as it stands, is, is when we secure long-term substitutes, and I'm, and I'm sure about that. I'm not jumping around. You're not taking five days here or there, but you've taken over for a classroom. They receive the per diem rate of 220, two, maybe off just a dollar or so there.
Okay.
And they'll get that for the remainder of this. We, we do have people that are taking, you know, maternity leave, three months.
Yeah.
They become your child's classroom teacher. You certainly want. Again, been doing this for a long time. State required after, and it is a new practice over the last several years, that teachers be certified and licensed. So, in the past, you can bring a substitute if they had a college degree, but didn't necessarily have to have the background. That's no longer the case. If it's a math classroom, we just, we just brought in a math long-term substitute in eighth grade. So, we have retired, we were very fortunate to secure a retired licensed math teacher qualified from a neighboring community, who's going to take on that role of responsibility for, for a good portion of the remainder of this year. So, pretty critical.
Yeah, yeah. Thank you.
Grace here.
Can you, at the next meeting, when you bring this schedule, remind us of this, this teacher, this 10-day, and if you're going to make any recommendations to the contrary, as it relates?
Yep. Again, nope. The requirement for her salary schedule and the programs, we need to make those adjustments.
Right.
We need to just kind of really take a look, I think, in good faith, and decide if we're going to adjust appropriately for some positions that currently exist that may fall below that line. And I, and I certainly will make reference to that, Derek, as well.
So, you know the questions. Subcommittee updates, superintendent evaluation goals.
Evaluation was complete. I've provided a draft to the subcommittee.
Yes.
I've provided you an electronic copy, and I have a hard copy. I do know we're going to go into executive session to discuss negotiations and, and my contract specifically. So, I have a hard copy available for our board members. I didn't think we were going to have a discussion tonight, per se, but there, I specifically wanted them to be in draft form. In addition, you have a, a three-ring binder. If you want to return your ring, three-ring binder, that's okay. We'll take that. But it, I tried to be all-inclusive to show previous evaluations, the survey that went out to the community, which was, which was pretty representative of all, all the stakeholders, in addition to adhering to that. So, subcommittee got that in advance, board members, and now the entire board.
Okay.
We're right on track.
Paul's with the subcommittee. Our next meeting is January 23rd. And then Regional FinCom, our next meeting is January 17th.
Correct.
Main topic of that is capital projects, as well as funding mechanism. As we've said before, the full FinCom representative of the town is very supportive of a separate funding mechanism outside of the operating request. So, it's definitely, which is why we're sort of really talking about multi-year plans, so we can figure out and have a recommendation made associated with that. Anything you want to add to that?
So, just, so just for the board, so, yeah, it's consistent. So, 17th, next Thursday, we have our Regional FinCom. The 23rd, we would be talking about capital projects and other budget items, which would then roll into the February 6th presentation, superintendent's budget, which hopefully, and by pushing it out and you supporting that, we're hoping to have a little bit more definitive numbers as it relates to state information, health insurance, and some other things. I think it's going to be a much more productive movement, even though we backed everything out a little bit.
The governor's numbers, too.
Any other business come before the meeting?
So, and believe it or not, I'm not looking to create a subcommittee, but I do have a request through Dr. Correa, Marlene's not here tonight, who's facilitating our strategic planning and involving school committee in that process. Leadership team's been doing a ton of work in relation to mission...
Get out of here.
No, I think I can, I think I can fill you in. I, I think it's painless. One of the thoughts were, was that, one, you receive an electronic survey, as we're doing with staff right now, that we've done with paraprofessionals, that we'll be doing with the community and parents. So, you could do that at any time, ask all committee members to respond. But also, we, we talked about having a potential innovative policy, meaning prior to a school committee, meaning having a brief strategic planning session for about an hour with school committee members down the line, obviously trying to work around our budget. But we, but it's, it's imperative that this, obviously, the school committee is part of a strategic planning process. And, and if, when we share with you some of the, the, the length of the surveys and things, they're relatively short and pretty concise, and we'd like to include you. So, I don't have a date in mind, but...
Well, if I may, having done a lot of strategic plans over the years, I'm a little leery of a one-hour session.
Yeah.
So, I'd like us to all think about that. I mean, usually, it's all post-it notes all over the place, and bring it back in. And you always have to have a facilitator, so, so somebody who's skilled at, at making sure that the priorities are there. You're looking at three to five years, or you're looking at five years. You know, there's a lot more to it than an hour. That's just my feeling.
Yeah, I was trying to kickstart just the input from the school committee. You're absolutely right. We've been putting a, a ton of time in already, actually, the leadership team and, and some of the work. It's great. We have 100, over 110 responses from our employees to date in relation to this. So, it's been a real inclusive piece, and we want to be sure that you're part of that process. I was trying to stay away from the, the Saturday morning sessions and, and those types of things, which, which typically are the strategies that are taken right there, because you do need a chunk of time. So, I thought we'd start with a, a session prior to a school committee meeting, kind of go from there.
But it may morph into something else.
All right, just to jump down, upcoming days, the district are listing on the back of the agenda. Obviously, our next meeting is January 23rd. There is no overall topic outside of potential items around capital projects and budget pieces, but that is rolling into February 6th, as you had suggested.
Yeah, so right now, we'd have the, the statement of interest recommendation as a carryover to tonight, and the budget, FY '20 budget, inclusive of this with the chart as it relates. So, absolutely. Other than that, you're right, we do not have any formal presentations. That was intentional.
So, next is, we'll do a roll call vote to go into executive session for reason number two, which is to conduct strategy sessions and preparations for negotiation with non-union personnel, superintendent schools, or to conduct collective bargaining session for contract negotiation. And we will not return to open session.
Correct. So, Renee, come with the rolls.
Steve Owen?
Yes.
Jeanne Fox?
Yes.
Sherri Barron?
Yes.